Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the January 2nd, 2025 reorganization meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education. In accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, this public reorganization meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education has been established by sending a copy of the public meeting notice to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger. In addition, copies of the announcement of this meeting have been sent to the Borough Clerk, and a copy of the notice of the meeting has also been posted on the bulletin board outside of the office of the Secretary to the Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business is to announce the official results of the Board election held on November 5th, 2024. For the three-year term candidates, if Katia Hernandez with 7,889 votes, Carrie Chudkowski with 6,918 votes, Lady Maldonado with 5,487 votes, Matthew Lebesky with 4,485 votes, and Anthony Esposito with 5,123 votes. Our next order of business is the swearing-in of our newly-elected Board members. This will be done in alphabetical order, beginning with Mrs. Chudkowski, then Mrs. Hernandez, and Mrs. Maldonado at the podium.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
I carry Chudkowski.
I carry Chudkowski.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For office of member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant to RS 19.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed.
In NJHS.
In NJHS.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Next up, we have Mrs. Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
I, Kate Hernandez. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by the law for the office.
Prescribed by the law for the office.
A member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
And I am not disqualified.
And I am not disqualified. As a voter pursuant.
To RS 19.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Listed in NJHS.
Eighteen A.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
I, Lady Maldonado, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Lady Maldonado, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by laws for the office of member of the Board of Education, and I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19, four dash one, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJHS, eighteen A, twelve dash one, and I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Code of Ethics for all Board members. I'm going to ask each Board member in alphabetical order to read a portion. They should all have a copy that is highlighted, and I'm going to start with Mrs. Bloom. And please make sure you turn on your microphone when it gets to your part.
I did, thank you. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibilities, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize the authority pressed with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you, everyone. I will now take the roll call alphabetically. Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay. At this time, I will open up to the floor for nominations for President of the Board of Education. Again, please just try to hit the button on your microphone. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I would like to nominate Lucy Bloom for President.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations for President of the Board of Education?
So moved.
By Mr. Smith, and can I get a second?
Second.
And that was Mrs. Napolitano. Just going to take a roll call to close nominations. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to take a roll call vote for the President of the Board of Education. Just state the last name of the person that you're voting for. Mrs. Bloom?
Bloom.
Mr. Callahan?
Bloom.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Bloom.
Mr. Fernandez?
Bloom.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Bloom.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Bloom.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Bloom.
Mrs. Pabon?
Bloom.
Mr. Smith?
Bloom.
Okay. Can I get a motion to affirm Mrs. Bloom as President of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Smith and Mrs. Pabon, and I'm just going to do one more roll call vote to affirm Mrs. Bloom as the President. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Bloom, and at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
You might not have COVID or something, but you absolutely got a cold. There's a nasty cold going on.
I have to apologize. I have been sick as a dog for the past five days. I'm on meds that are making me a little loopy, so we're going to have some fun tonight. Ms. Hill, you're going to have to help me out here with the next. Were you talking while I was talking? The next order of business is?
The vote for the Vice President.
Okay, so we need to take nominations for Vice President. So can I please get some nominations?
I'll make a nomination. I'm nominating Jeff Smith.
Okay. I will second that. Any other nominations? No. Okay. You have to help me out here, Erin.
Close nominations.
Sure you can. Okay, so we will close nominations.
So moved.
Thank you. Take a motion to close nominations. Second. Yes, do we need a second?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Any opposed?
Anybody opposed? No. Excuse me, folks. Okay, now we need to do a roll call vote?
You do roll call vote. Yes, you have a motion, you have a second.
Thank you. Ms. Hill, would you please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So now we've closed nominations. Is there a motion?
We need a motion?
So moved.
To affirm?
Mr. Smith.
Okay. And now we.
Now it's a roll call.
Now we need a roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Smith, right? Yes, Mr. Smith? Smith.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Now what?
Okay, so we've made.
We've had the vote. Now.
So I believe our next order is to approve the reorganization agenda. There's two separate agendas for tonight. There's the business agenda and the reorg agenda.
Okay. So this is the reorg agenda.
Actually, do we want to open it up to public for comments on the reorg agenda only?
You don't have to do that.
No?
Because it's still one meeting.
Okay.
Technically, so you could do it as one agenda. It's up to you, but you could just do one public comment, period.
I guess it would depend if they want to do the vote before public has had a chance to comment on the reorg agenda only.
Okay, we're on here, so no reorganization agenda.
Thank you. Okay.
I would just go to where you normally have public comment.
Yes, I think we would open up for public comment for reorg items only.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone from public that has anything to say on this reorganization agenda? No, thank you. Seeing none, we will close public. Okay.
So now we would just need a motion for to approve the reorganization agenda.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the reorg agenda.
I have Mrs. Pabon, and I thought I heard Mr. Callahan. Thank you.
Okay, so motion.
Can I do the roll call vote, Mrs. Bloom?
You should do a roll call.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess I'm not the only one who's a little loopy. Seems to be everyone tonight.
And we're not going to executive session on the.
We are not going into executive tonight, so our next thing would just be our business agenda.
Okay. Okay. So here we, we're not going to pledge the flag.
You don't need to call a order.
Okay, we're called to order. We pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag. You don't need to do that. Roll call.
The next we have is the presentation.
Okay, so no correspondence, no student reps. Okay.
Food service presentation.
Yep, presentation.
All right.
As we get Mr. Sittadino?
Okay.
So as we all know, we are kicking off our budget presentation season. The Board approved our budget development calendar back in October. We're happy to say that we're moving along in accordance with that. We recently received all the budget information from our administrators. Ms. Hill, myself, and our central administration will be working diligently to balance that preliminary budget with revenues from the previous year. And of course, we'll be kicking off our presentations this evening with our food services presentation. Recognizing, though, that our food services program is not funded by the budget, it is its own enterprise account. However, we always take the time, as our first presentation of the year, to give you, in essence, a state of our food services department, wherein which Mr. Sittadino will tell you about the different programs that we're involved in now and the programs that we want to involve ourselves in next year. And then Ms. Hill will give you a brief synopsis of the health of our food services department. That would be the fiscal health. So, Mr. Sittadino, if you're ready, let's begin.
Today, over the next few minutes, we're going to chat about the reimbursement breakdown for the current school year, the monthly meal totals for September, October, and November, what's new and exciting in food services, and then we'll round it out with the summary of finances. For this school year, the federal reimbursement rate is going to be as follows. The free lunches are going to come back at $4.04. The reduced rate for the lunches is $4.03, and the paid lunches is going to be $0.42. The breakfasts under the free category are going to be $2.84, reduced breakfasts at $2.54, and the paid breakfasts at $0.39. The monthly meal comparisons to start us off this school year, we did 64,612 meals in September. October, we did 93,794 meals, and in November, we did 59,308 meals. As I was looking at this in the hallway, going through the lines, I thought I should have renamed this September always slightly slow, because it always does in the last 15 years I've been doing this. The September numbers are always slow, but we quickly picked it back up again. We did 3,500 meals per day in September, and as you can see, we quickly up that to just over 4,200 in October and just over 4,200 again in November. The top performers from last year are the high school at 4% over what we were doing from last year, and the middle school, just about 7% over what we were doing from last The new in food services category, we have a second new van. The fleet has doubled over the summer. Beautiful, big white van. I don't know if anyone's seen it around town. We've got two of them. They're lettered up, they're ready to go. Jimmy wants to put a snowplow on it. I'm all for it. They're beastly, they're huge. They help us separate our two drivers. We can have one driver all the way over at Wilson School delivering produce and dropping some lunches off to my students at the Bombers Beyond Cafe, and we can have the other driver all the way over on this side of town doing the slower delivery, so it all works great. Produce delivery day is huge. Half-days are also huge with two vans. Splitting the guys up works out beautifully. Other two awesome things I want to chat about are the combination ovens, or combi ovens, that we call them in the industry. They have these great big touchscreens on them. They'll save your recipe. There's an app for the big tall one that's downstairs here. You can actually get an app for it. I'm not going to enable the settings, but you can get an app, put your food in, let it do its thing, go grab lunch and come back, and it'll tell you when it's done, it'll turn it off for you. It's a really, really, really neat piece of machinery. So what they also do with the combination part of it is it's a traditional oven. You can turn it into an air fryer, so we're putting potatoes in there, and they're coming out just like they're fried from the windmill. Beautiful. And with another push of a button, we can put in fresh vegetables, and it'll steam them up perfectly. And then we can go right back over there, put burgers in there, breaded chicken sandwiches, and it will just treat it like a very traditional oven. Next up, I want to chat about Pay Schools. Pay Schools is our new cloud-based lunch account information center. With the help of the very, very user-friendly app that I'm sure everybody's downloaded already, parents can see all the transactions from the students, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or excuse me, breakfast, lunch, and snack. They can also add money to the account with a credit card or a debit card from the app. They can even send in cash or check with their students, and they can check the app right after the lunch period, just to verify that the student handed in the check or cash to the cashiers. Added bonus with Pay Schools on the app is that the online lunch application is now central with the app. Last year, we had two different programs there, and it got a little confusing, so it's great that they're both under the same roof. We also upgraded our cash registers. That's this big screen in the middle here. These are 18-inch touchscreen monitors. They have a great customizable menu board on the side. So the way that it works now is the students will come into the server for each school. They can pick out their lunch, they'll hop over into the lunch line, a quick scan of their ID, their picture comes up on this bottom square right here, their name, classroom, all that relevant information comes up there. The cashier has to push a couple buttons based on whatever the student has chosen for lunch, and we're getting so much better at it, sometimes it's like a two- or a three-second transaction. And in places like the high school, where we're doing sometimes 1,100 meals a day, it's just pretty quick. It's really, really fun to watch over there. Added bonus with these new registers are the teachers and staff are linked up there as well, so teachers are coming through, scanning in, teachers can add money on the app. It works out really, really well. Also new and exciting is Healthy Pro. Healthy Pro is our online menu viewer. What I really like about Healthy Pro is that it's going to organize all the meals, all the meal components into the five categories. It's a huge upgrade from last year that also shows the nutritional information, and there's a really fun build-a-meal feature that we're going to chat about in just a quick second. The next slide is an example of what happens when we're looking at that menu that we had before. We can click on any of the items on there, and up comes allergen information, ingredients, and nutritional information. That is super important for our diabetic students. This is what the build-a-meal feature looks like. It's going to be found on the left side if you're at home looking at it, and we're just going to have a quick little tutorial. Thank you, Mr. Makely, for helping me out with this kind of last minute. So he's bringing up our high school lunch menu. Mrs. Bloom, help me out here. Pick a day for next week. Yep. Wednesday of next week, please. All right, so this is Wednesday at the high school. Mr. Callahan, what do you want to have for lunch next Wednesday at the high school? What's your entree over here? Cheeseburger, awesome choice. All right? So, Mr. Makely just highlighted cheeseburger. And as you can see on the side, we have all the nutritional information that just popped up for the cheeseburger there. Dr. Agulies, with your cheeseburger. You wanna do fresh baby carrots or a little garbanzo beans? All right, he's going with the garbanzo beans. Excellent. Ms. Hill, you wanna pick, wanna go fruit juice or a sort of fruit?
Uh, let's go with fruit juice.
Fruit juice. Excellent. Mrs. Bloom, milk or no milk?
Milk.
All right. So now you can look over here, and it's added everything up. We were, I've been bragging about this all last spring to the nurses, and they were thrilled about it. Like I said before, the diabetic students are really taking advantage of this. Anybody that wants to see, wants to care a little more about, you know, what we're eating, and maybe make a different choice based on this, they can kind of hang out with that at home, or maybe before they hop into the lunch line, and take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Makely. Next, we can move on to the summary of the finances.
Okay, so I'm not gonna read all of the numbers on this small chart, but just to, if you look at the bottom section of it, you'll see our net profit or loss over the last several years. The most recent information is unaudited. I did get our audit over the break, but at that point, I didn't have the time to go through and change these numbers, but it's not much different than what the auditors have. They use a few different figures that I don't, but it works out about the same. So with this, you can see that in 2019-20, we operated that year at a loss. Whereas in 2020-2021, we also operated at a loss. The reason we operated at a loss those years is because of the pandemic. In the following year, 21-22, that was when all of our students were eligible for free lunch and free breakfast. So there was a large surplus that year of $1.6 million in net profit. And the year after, we had another about $600,000 in net profit. This is because of all of the students that were receiving free lunch, but in addition, the federal government raised the rates that they were paying us for the meals, and they also continued to give us funding to compensate for the fact that a lot of costs of food kept going up. So, in theory, this is a good thing. However, with food services, we are not allowed to have excess surplus. The only amount of money we're allowed to have in there is basically three months of operating expenditures. So you'll see that last row on this chart is the allowed fund balance. So again, this is my estimate, this isn't, there might be things that I include that the auditors don't, but this is what our allowable fund balance is. So for the 23-24 year, that was around $1 million. But we are at about $2.5 million in that account. So we have to spend that down as much as we can. So there were some expenses on June 30th that hadn't actually hit the account yet because they were outstanding purchase orders. For instance, the van we purchased, we submitted the purchase order last school year, but we didn't get it until the summer, so that's not included. So we have about $200,000 that we spent from last year. We have a little bit from this year, too. So right now, we have about $1.2 million in surplus that needs to be spent down. So Mr. Sididino and I are actually gonna be meeting later this month, and he's gonna give us some ideas on improvements we can make. One of those things is a new serving line at the middle school, and several other things in terms of new equipment that we've been working on. As you can see from Mr. Sididino's presentation, we've already been working on that with some equipment. Because our equipment in food services, up until about two years ago, was fully depreciated, which means we hadn't replaced anything in a very long time. So we're in a unique situation where we can do that, but we also have to keep in mind that, at some point, that surplus will go away. So we don't necessarily wanna use it for all recurring expenditures. And yes, so that's where we are. I think it's the only time you'll ever hear a school business administrator talk about how we need to spend money, so.
Any questions for Mr. Sididino or Ms. Hill?
Yeah, how you doing? Oh, it's a great program you have, a great job with that. I just got one, one question. With the nutritional information. Does that always pop up, or is that an optional piece of information that the kids can opt into?
If you pull up the menu, everything should be clickable.
So it's not automatically there, you have to click on items to actually.
So in other words, if you're ordering a lunch, the nutritional information doesn't automatically pop up?
No, no, this isn't even ordering lunch, this is just the online meal viewer for parents or students at home, on a desktop, or on the app.
But on, well, I mean, on the app or at the desktop at home, does the nutritional information automatically pop up? Or do they need to click on a separate step to see that? That's what I'm saying, so if you select a hamburger, the nutritional information for that hamburger will pop up?
If you click on it to see that information, but if you're just looking at the menu, that's not on there. You have to actually click on the item to get the information.
And I apologize, because I'm not that bright, so help me out here. I just wanna make sure crystal clear. I'm ordering a hamburger. I clicked that I want a hamburger.
So what is confusing is, this is just the meal viewer, nobody's ordering from the menu.
Okay.
People, all the students are coming into the serverys and picking up the food based on the IT test or whatever, they're just feeling that bad. Especially the younger students, that I'm sure they're not even looking at the menu. The menu isn't available in any of the schools, it lives exclusively online.
The diabetic students are the ones that sometimes they need that information. The nurse needs to know that information, and they can pull it up very quickly.
I guess. It's not for ordering purposes at all.
But if a kid wanted to see what was on the menu, they would have to go to this menu and see this?
No, there's menus in the actual schools that just are printed menus, correct? So it just has the information, it doesn't have any of that additional backup that's just online.
Again, I mean, is there a functionality that we can make that a separate clickable item? Because.
We can ask.
Yes, we understand that diabetic kids, but the truth of the matter is, kids' nutritional needs are vastly different than adults, and overwhelmingly, kids really don't need to be worrying about their calories. We're far more likely to have a child with a needing disorder, whether it's diagnosed or undiagnosed. And seeing that, although it could be helpful to a certain number, I think far more would, may have some difficulty with that. I think it's good to have both options, but I think that should be an option that someone can click into and see it if they wanted to, not necessarily if they were gonna see it, that they had to see that shock value.
Yep. I guess it's been around for, they thought of everything, so I'm sure I can ask them tomorrow, I'll put in a.
That'd be great, and by the way, listen, truly amazing job you did with this. You've done amazing jobs to do many years, so really great job. This is a fantastic thing, that's just one little thing I just wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Question. Does anybody eat the garbanzo beans? To each his own. Great job, Nick, thank you.
Maybe, I don't know. We'll see if that's, see if they can work it out on the IT front.
I had a question for Erin. When it comes to the surplus, can it only be used for food services, or can it be allocated anywhere?
So, thank you for asking that. It is restricted, and it's very restrictive even within food services, what you're allowed to do. So we're not allowed to use it for any kind of construction either. So you wouldn't be able to, like, rip up the floors and replace the floors in the cafeteria. It's only for things that benefit the food services program. And that's because most of the funding that we have is federal funds. So it's very restricted to just for that federal program.
We were able to use it for the walk-in icebox, right?
Correct, because that was on the list of allowable equipment, and we did submit to the state to get approval to do that as well. So there was like minor construction, but it was specifically to get that walk-in replaced. Walk-in freezer and refrigerator.
But that's where we had to be creative, too, with the delivery trucks, as well as delivery personnel. It solved a problem, but also allowed us to dwindle that down.
Correct.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, we were able to use that money to purchase the van?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
And it's been great, we satellite a lot of food in districts, so previously, we only had the one van, so they were going all over town and even over to Cheesecake, so now.
We were using buildings and grounds vans, yeah?
Yes, we were. We were using.
So now we're using our vans designed for the purpose of delivering food?
We have, we have the plan in place that we provide. Do we need to provide a plan to the state showing how we're gonna spend it down?
Yeah, so they gave us through the end of this year, because this, this was really an audit recommendation, not in this fiscal year, the year before. But that came out late in the year, so we still have a little bit of time to get some of it resolved. So they're looking for us to have spent down half of that surplus by the end of this school year. So we are working diligently on that.
We wanted to get a food truck at one point, but that wasn't there.
No, that's not allowable.
That was a good idea, that was a really good idea. It was shot down, though. Thanks, Erin.
And Bombers, Bombers Beyond, is that included in the food service?
No, because it's not part of, that's totally separate. It's part of an enterprise fund, and we're actually separating it out, so that none of those.
So we can't use any of that surplus for that kitchen?
Right, because it's not part of the national school lunch program. So you can only use the funds from the national school lunch program for the national school lunch program.
But by the way, that program does really well, too.
Yes.
Oh, that's fantastic, I love that.
The best cup of coffee.
It is.
Happiest place in Sevierville. By the way, well, we talked about this last meeting, number one.
Yeah.
Viewer's choice in New Jersey, number one. Coffee shop. Oh, I did, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Naster.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino, thank you, Ms. Hill.
Okay. Presentation, board discussion. Okay.
Or board discussion.
Now we need to open to public.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing on it.
Sorry, the next up would be public comment on the superintendent's report, or the agenda items.
All right, so we will now open to public for any questions on the presentation or the regular agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will close public. A motion to close public? Do we need a motion?
No move.
No, okay, public is closed. Erin says we don't need a motion. Okay. Now, Dr. Labby.
It's a real quick report, yeah. Going along with our presentation, we're asking you on, in finance, to approve the purchase of a Metro Model Mobile Heated Cabinet for the Seville War Memorial High School kitchen at a cost of $3,581.55. And then, moving along to personnel, we're asking you to appoint a campus security monitor and two substitutes. That's it, folks. Any questions on those items or anything else on the agenda? I know, Mr. Smith, you were looking forward to our retirement speech, but.
I was, but you're taking lessons from Mr. Glockmull, oh yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, the shortest presentation I have ever heard. We would need to make a motion to accept the superintendent's report? So move. Second.
So I have Mrs. Pabon and Mrs. Napolitano. You want me to do a roll call?
Is there anything on there that's financial or personnel? Who's in favor?
Oh, okay.
Can we stick with what, I, counselor, I know that we're.
I have the utmost respect for you, counselor, but we have our system here, so let's just keep following our system.
Ms. Hill, roll call.
Couple of years of not attending public meetings.
Calm down.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess that's it.
Public participation.
No, we just did.
Well, you did it for agenda items, now you're just for anything.
Oh, again?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Anybody out there who wants to talk about anything at all? Seeing none. We will close public. And now, any board members?
I'd like to make a comment. Mr. Sididino provided some refreshments in our lounge that I would like to welcome the members of the public that are here to support our new board members, or who are just here at all. If you'd like to enjoy some coffee, cookies, and I think there are some cakes in there as well, please join us in the staff lounge after the meeting.
Okay. Any board members have anything they would like to contribute before we close?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words. As we kick off this new year, I'm thrilled to welcome our three newest board members. Katia, Carrie, and Lady. Each of you bring fresh ideas, new energy, and a unique perspective to the board, and we couldn't be more excited to have you join us. Until today, I held the dubious distinction of being the only, not only the only Hispanic, but the only person of color to have ever served on the Board of Education. But today, we made history. For the first time, this board includes not just one, but two women of color. And more importantly, the first two Latinos on our board, Katia and Lady. Your presence here is groundbreaking and a powerful testament to the progress of our community. Trust me when I say, this is not an insignificant milestone, it's a big deal. To put this in perspective, for over 100 years, the board had never had a single person of color, ever. In just the last four years, we've seen significant progress. And today, a third of our board is comprised of individuals of color, including our first two women of color. But our transformation goes beyond just the board. Thanks to the leadership of Dr. Labby and Dr. Agulies, we have diversified our staff and continue to make improvements in expanding our representation. Thank you, Dr. Labby and Dr. Agulies, for all you've done. Carrie, don't think I've forgotten about you. Your dedication and passion for education makes a fantastic addition to this team. Together, the three of you will bring much-needed infusion of innovation, collaboration that will help us tackle the challenges ahead and keep our district moving forward. As you begin this journey, remember that you're not in this alone. Everyone in this room, my fellow board members, our dedicated administrators, and especially our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Labby, is here to help. Dr. Labby is not just a wealth of knowledge, but also one of the most committed advocates for our students you'll ever meet. As Benjamin Franklin once said, "Tell me and I forget, teach me I remember, involve me and I'll learn." Trust me, Dr. Labby will make sure that you're involved. Often more, more often than you wanna be involved. Welcome to the team. Let's roll up our sleeves and get to work for the kids of Seville. And if things ever get overwhelming, don't forget, Dr. Agulies and I always have some cafecito ready. And a lot of bad jokes. Thank you for yourself for sacrifice in this undertaking. And welcome aboard.
I would like to say something as well. I would like to welcome the new board members, and I would like you, you know, as you ran for the Board of Ed, you had your supporters, we all have our supporters, we all have our naysayers, okay? What I would like all of you to do is continue to hold your convictions. Don't be a chameleon, don't vote for something because somebody else. You vote for what you believe in, in your heart, in your mind, and in your soul, okay? And I think you're gonna do well. But don't be a chameleon, do not change because the situation changes, or you don't need to be friends with anybody on the board. You need to represent the children of Seville. And I think you're all gonna do great, so welcome aboard.
Anyone else? Okay. Sure.
Bear with me. I wanted to thank so much everyone who came out to vote on November 5th, and those that are watching the recording or will. We really appreciate those that came out to vote and exercising that right as a citizen in this country. It's so important, and we appreciate it. We appreciate especially those who voted for us, for, I'll speak for myself, I appreciate those who voted for me. Thank you to my family. It was quite a campaign, and it took a lot of support from my family. So I thank you, and our friends as well, and everything that everyone contributed to helping with our campaign. It doesn't go, and I just, a thousand thank yous for all the help. I accept my seat on the Seville Board of Education with humble gratitude, and I mean that to the community of Seville and to the Lord for directing me onto this exciting new path. It is exciting, this new year ahead, Happy New Year, and it's gonna be quite a year. I look forward to serving alongside my fellow board members to pursue academic success and bright futures for our students, to be an advocate for the parents of Seville, and to keep parents involved in every aspect of their child's education. I do feel the weight of the stewardship of your tax dollars, as does the rest of the board, and I'm gonna do a good job for you, and I thank you. God bless you.
Go ahead. Katia, turn on your microphone.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank our community for praising your trust in me to serve as a member of the Board of Education. I am honored and excited to have this opportunity to represent our students, parents, teachers, and our community. Education is the foundation of a strong community, and I am committed to working hard to make sure every student gets the best educational opportunities they need to succeed for whatever comes next in their future. To my fellow board members, I look forward to working with you to make decisions. To my fellow board members, I look forward to working with you to make decisions that put our student first. And to the students, you are the reason we are all here, and I will do my best to serve you. Finally, thank you to my husband and my daughters, friends, and everyone to support us during the campaign, who encourage us through this journey. Your support made all the difference. Thank you.
Likewise, like, uh, Carrie and Katia, I resonate, and I say I want to thank my family, my friends, for your love, support, dedication, encouragement, and sacrifice for my husband and my children especially. Um, special thank you to the community for entrusting me with the honor of serving in the Board of Education. Apologize for my voice, I'm getting, I'm getting over a cold. Um, to the members of the Board of Education, I look forward to serving with each and every one of you, and understand we will have differing views at different topics or what have you, but we do have a common goal, which is doing what's best for our children at hand and for the community. And I vow to work with you, respect your voices, and always represent and lead with integrity. Lastly, I want to highlight, and this is something personal for me, the last time I spoke at the Board of Education meeting as a parent, um, that was on June eighteenth, it was when I would came from my grandfather's hospital bed, um, that day. He passed away a month and nine days after that, on July twenty-seventh, um, which is eight days after I officially submitted my Board of Ed candidacy papers. So these past six months have been one of the most, if not the most difficult of my life, but I have also learned so much about the importance in the perseverance, resilience, integrity, but most importantly, the community. I couldn't have pressed on if it wasn't for the support of my co-candidates and my family and my friends, so I just wanted to share a picture of my grandfather. And, um, I'm doing this for his honor as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?